All righty. Would everyone please stand and join us for the Right Start retreat, ladies and gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this school board meeting for Independent School District Number 544 to the river. The first item of business is to establish our quorum.
Natalie Cole here.
Natalie Kintz here.
Here.
Wayne Anderson here.
Here.
Stephen Bigasong here.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the slightly modified agenda? It's a little different than our email copy with one final addition to the business.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that's approved. And we have reports tonight, beginning with elementary principal Scott Kolbeck, who will report on the happenings at Adams and McKinley School. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Hi, everybody. So here we are with six school days remaining, and there's some people I want to recognize. In the spring, we do testing, which comes as no surprise to people. And at McKinley and Adams, we map test. We do it three times a year. We do it fall, winter, and spring. What that means is we bring every classroom into a computer lab four times, twice for reading tests and twice for math tests. And it takes a lot of work to coordinate that effort. And at Adams School, Brittany Borcharding did a fine job getting all of our classes through the computer lab. At McKinley School, Amy Hopper did the same. So the results of the tests are very important to the classroom teachers. They look at those and see and measure the growth of their students. And there's a lot of self-reflection on the part of the staff that comes with that data that we get from those tests. So thank you again to Brittany and Amy for leading that effort. One week from tomorrow, our first grade students at McKinley are going to be bussed over to Adams School and spend about two and a half hours with us. We'll do some things to help them become familiar to the building, including having them participate in our hot dog. We grill hot dogs on that day. It's an annual event at Adams School, and we feed everybody. But we found out last year it was a lot of fun to bring those McKinley freshmen over and have them be a part of that. So we're looking forward to having them there. Mr. Jacobson, our music teacher, will play a part of that day, or a part in that day, along with Amy Newkirk, our library para. And then Jesse Thorsted, too, will take the kids into the computer lab and do some things. We'll have them in the cafeteria for a snack. They'll play on the playground and do all kinds of fun things. So when they get on the bus to head back to McKinley, hopefully they're excited for next year and for second grade. On Friday, we wrapped up our outdoor recess program that we refer to as JAWS, jogging and walking, students. Just want to report that our students this year at Adams School combined ran 9,440 miles, 9,440 miles, which equates to a little over 66,000 laps around the perimeter of the playground. Now, if you were to drive past Adams School, you'll see a very well-worn path around the perimeter of the school, and you can see after 66,000 laps why we have a good path there. Ten of our students actually ran over 100 miles this year during recess, so we're pretty proud of all the students. But we'll be recognizing some kids on the last day of school during an assembly. Today, we've got a first grade music program. We're going to do the same thing tomorrow and Wednesday. We have six first grade classrooms at Adams, so we do two classes at a time, three days in a row. It's always a fantastic program. Mr. Jacobson does such a nice job. It's the same program year in and year out, but it's new to the kids, which is what matters. And the parents and the grandparents enjoy the program. It's very well-attended, and we just kind of started that today. It was a good time. I'll tell you just a little bit about Right Start. Right Start is planned at McKinley School on June 6th and 7th, which is a Tuesday and Wednesday. Kylie Bo and Shelley Shonit will be our Right Start teachers this year. What we do is we bring kindergarten, our next year's kindergarten group, we bring them into the building for two consecutive days for an hour and a half each day. And it's just an orientation for them to hopefully help them feel comfortable as they go into the summer, knowing where they're going to be in the fall. And then I think Mrs. Rund will probably touch on this, but tomorrow, we're going to bus our second grade students from Adams School over to Cleveland for some fun activity in the morning. And just want to mention, our kindergarten students recently spent some time out at Red Horse Ranch for what we call Kindergarten Farm Day, and that's always a highlight for those five and six-year-olds. And then at Adams School, recently, our second graders participated in a bike safety presentation with Mr. Hykes. Anybody needing a bike helmet, of course, could get one. And then a water safety presentation, which has become kind of anything now since we have a couple of teachers on staff who, in the summer, do water safety patrol, Mr. Meyer and Mr. Damon. And then I wanted to thank and recognize our teachers and Carrie Thompson for their work on report cards. We've been making some changes to those, getting together and having meetings and talking about that and moving to more, you know, down the road, the eventual goal is to more of a standards-based report card. And with our move from Powerschool to Synergy, this is kind of the time to do that and address that. So thank you to Carrie and our teachers for working on revamping our report cards. And that's my report for this evening. I can entertain any questions if you have any.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next, we'll call for a report from Kennedy Run, our Cleveland Elementary Principal.
Good evening. Hello. Last time I was here to talk with you, we are just jumping into our MCA testing, and we're pleased to report that we've concluded our Prairie Science MCA testing with our third, fourth, and fifth graders. It all went very well. Many of the students tested great in their classroom settings on the Chromebooks. Some classes tested in lab one at Cleveland, and the Prairie Science class, fifth grade Prairie Science classes, completed the MCA science test at their Prairie Science classroom, and that also went very, very well. So good to wrap that up and have the cooperation of everybody. Kudos to Sherri Bernard. She is our test coordinator at Cleveland and did a marvelous job touching base with teachers as she developed the testing schedule, oversaw all the details that happened behind the scenes, and preparing for all of that. And we really appreciate all of her efforts that it takes to have that all go so smoothly over the course of those weeks. And then I just kind of have a summary here, grade level by grade level for you. Our third grade classrooms, third grade sections made their final trips to Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. They make seven trips out there each year, and they've become investigators. And as they go through their activities there, they're discovering a different prairie animal throughout the school year. And already, specific dates are on the calendar for next year's third grade class to do their trips to Prairie Wetlands Learning Center and have those similar experiences. As Mr. Kolbeck mentioned, tomorrow, we're welcoming the second grade classes to Cleveland for their orientation session. The third grade teachers do an outstanding job of finding some relevant information for them and then also some fun activities that go hand-in-hand with a tour of the building. So it's a great time for them to come into the school, pair up with the current third graders, see the teachers that they were going to, they're going to begin to know next year, along with some additional staff members that will be important players in their third grade year. So the Otter is going to be out front welcoming them. We're going to start the day meeting in the gym with some fun activities and then concluding with that tour before they head back to Adams, just in time for lunch. Our fourth graders, the Prairie Science class sections recently spent time at Gerardo Park, observing the rookery that is, has been established there. That gave them a unique opportunity to learn more about the great egrets that are nesting there and roosting there, observe firsthand, and then just have some follow-up discussion as well. So that's unique to our community and a great learning experience for them. Last Tuesday, the Prairie Science class sections had a special day planned out at Glendale Park, but unfortunately, the rain, the rainy weather, had to postpone that trip. And as the teachers looked at the calendar, it's just really, with all the other activities planned, it's unfortunate that we can't reschedule that for a different date. And then this Thursday and Friday, the fourth and fifth grade Prairie Science class sections have their celebration days. And this is a really special day for those students and their families who are able to attend. The morning sessions have their, morning sections have their sessions planned with their families at 9:30 in the morning and the afternoon at 1:30. And it's a time where family members are able to come and spend time with groups of children and hear their end-of-the-year celebration speeches that they've written. And it's really pretty neat to hear what the, what each child's highlight was over the year and some of those incredible learning experiences that they've had. And it gets to be a treasure. But what they write really gets to be a treasure that goes hand-in-hand with those journals that they keep track of over the course of the year as well. And then fifth grade, the past two weeks, fifth graders have been studying author and pioneer Laura Ingalls Wilder. This is an annual study that becomes memorable for those fifth graders as well. We had some special guest speakers that included Missy Hermes. Missy came and spoke to the kids about homesteading. Mike Partain comes each year and talks about gunsmithing. And Ellen Sundberg joins the fifth grade classes, too, and talks about bees and honeymaking. Their study culminates by spending a day in 1862 dressed as pioneers. They write on slates. They have a spelling bee. They make butter. They recite poetry. Had a colorful project made of tin, art project made of tin, a cake walk, and then also enjoying some fiddling at the end of the day. So it's always fun to see the staff and students coming into the building dressed in attire from the 1800s and having a unique day of learning that way. Last Friday, the Prairie Science sections had a field trip day to Maplewood State Park, and they were thankful for that beautiful weather that we had last Friday. Hopefully, they were able to rest up this weekend. The fifth and sixth grade track meet is held this coming Wednesday. The forecast looks promising, so we're all crossing our fingers that the weather holds out and that gets to be a good day and requires a little sunscreen. Fifth grade teacher and track coach Nikki Weldy does an outstanding job of coordinating this event. The FIAD teachers do a great job of kind of preparing the students for that day and getting them to participate in as many field and running events as they can. Parent volunteers are greatly appreciated to help run those events and do some timing as well. Last week, we enjoyed the fifth grade band performance in their spring concert. There were 68 fifth graders who have been part of the band this year, and 18 of those 68 also participate in both band and orchestra, so they'll be performing again this evening. There are total, so speaking of this evening's orchestra performance, there are 143 fourth and fifth grade students that are excited to perform in the all-school orchestra concert tonight. They were here this afternoon for mass rehearsal, and I'm looking forward to their performance this evening as well. So there are many exciting learning opportunities still happening here right through the end of the school year, the very last day of school. We have fifth grade sections that will be going to the Yum-Cum Center in Bonanzaville and Farham Moorhead, so lots of things built in right through the very last day of school. Any questions?
Next, we'll hear our report from secondary principal Dean Monkey.
Good evening, everybody. And Mrs. Rund also failed to mention that she was a guest performer at the middle school band concert the other night. Her and Mrs. Wasburg were guest artists there. They did a fantastic job, so that was the, sorry, that was the comic relief for the night.
Yeah, it was.
We've got a bunch of concerts coming up here, of course, at Kennedy Secondary School, starting with tonight, 7 o'clock, we have our all-school orchestra concert. So any students from fourth grade through our seniors participating. So that's a wonderful event in our Gold Gym, and that will be packed tonight as well. And then throughout the rest of this week, we have our high school choir concert on Wednesday evening at 7 o'clock in the auditorium, followed by our middle school choir concert on Thursday evening, also in the auditorium. And also on Thursday evening, we have the Blondo Fine Arts Festival that will be taking place from 5 o'clock in the evening until 8:00. And so everybody is just welcome to stop in at your convenience and check out the tons of art projects that will be throughout the whole school on that evening. Can't say enough about Better Blutinoff and Len Orin for all the work they put into to put all those displays out for that evening. So please come and join us for that. Couple other things here for the end of the year. Our high school master schedule for next year has been turned over to our counselors. We've all appreciated the wonderful learning opportunity that we've had here moving into Synergy and trying to figure this all out. It really is a friendly program that I think, to sum it up best, it seems to take a couple extra clicks right now to get some of your tasks accomplished, but all the information is readily available, and we're learning something new every day. So it's been a good change for us. A reminder about the graduation programs coming up. On Thursday, June 1st, at 7:00, we have our Area Learning Center graduation will take place in the Kennedy Auditorium. That'll take place then at 7:00 on that Thursday, followed by the Friday at 7:00 in our Gold Gymnasium for our all-school there graduation program. And we will have, I believe, upwards of about 11 students from our online academy. We'll probably have upwards of about 32 possible students to graduate out of our online program this year, and we have at least 11 of them that are interested in actually coming here for the evening and going through the ceremony. In fact, we had a family stop by just the other day because they happened to be traveling through town and just kind of wanted to get the lay of the land, so it was fun to meet that student as well. And then finally, we've been inviting our fourth and fifth graders over here to the Kennedy Building for some quick tours. We had all of the fourth graders over here last year, ah, last year, last week, and we just kind of mentioned to them that we just thought they were spoiled. They get a chance to come over here, and we're going to put them all together in this three-story tower over here, and they're going to have seven different lunch choices, and they get a brand-new playground right out of the back door. So we had them pretty pumped up by the time I got out of here, which was a whole lot of fun. And John Steinbrenner helped me with that, and it was just a blast to see those students over here. And tomorrow, we'll welcome our fifth graders coming over throughout the day in two or three different groups. And again, it'll just be fun to kind of show them around. And that, of course, is just a quick tour. We're inviting them all back about the third week in August for our Right Start program. We have four of our teachers that are going to work with that program this year. They'll get a chance to come in for two different afternoons, a couple afternoons for our incoming fifth graders, a couple afternoons for incoming sixth graders. And there, they'll get the full blown. We told them every corner you're going to get a chance to see and explore. And we, Nikki Weldy and Renee Erickson, Dave Rund, and Melanie Wagner are going to help us with that program. So that'll be, that'll be fun. We told them to look for a bright-colored envelope and letter that will come in the mail about the first week in August, inviting all those students to come back and visit. So I think that's what I had on my list. Any questions?
Hi, thank you. Are students that have an IEP that are in fourth and fifth grade at other schools that are going to then be coming here to receive service, are those students invited to come for the Right Start program?
We have if we get a specific request from their case manager.
Okay.
Sometimes we've done that on the same day, sometimes we've done it on different days. And I know that Shannon Erickson and Stacy helped me look through that list just to see if we might need other parent or support help that's here on those Right Start days as well. So everybody will get a letter. Everybody will get an invitation, you know, as long as they're enrolled somewhere for us. So yeah, they're all, they'll all be invited.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Superintendent Ness?
Yes, just a couple things. As we speak, I'm wondering how the legislators are doing down at the Capitol. They're supposed to be done by midnight. Doesn't sound like they're going to finish today. But it looks like a couple of points of interest here is the election day. They are going to allow us to combine polling places still. There was a bill that would require us to have lots of different polling places for the fall election for school board member, that position. But then there's other limitations, and I believe that if this passes in the future, operating levies or bond referendums, different types of things. You can only do the second Tuesday in February, April, and May, or the November election day is also, is always the first Tuesday after the first Monday. Okay? So there has to be a Monday in November, and then that Tuesday is the election day. And so you'll have four opportunities to run those, any type of elections. But my understanding is they are not going to allow us to appoint a candidate until the fall of 2018, so we will, looks like we will be running an election for sure this fall, but we would be able to combine polling places, and we'll have to decide this summer already how we're going to do that. So at our summer retreat that we do in July, we'll finalize all those plans to do that. Question on TRA, not sure if they're doing that. The education bill's not done, the tax bill not done. The teacher licensure, which is allowing teachers, especially from out of state, to get licensed easier, was vetoed, and now, but it sounds like they have an agreement. If they do finish, they'll get that in there. So there's public safety, there's government, and the bonding bill, lots of stuff to be by midnight here. We'll see how that goes. The moving, I've delivered some boxes to Cleveland and Adams today, so people are starting to get antsy about that. They'll be busy, busy moving. And also at the graduation ceremony, the senior class is going to be honoring the 14 retirees this year, so that is a nice gesture on their part. So that's what I had today.
Great. Any questions for the superintendents? All right, we'll move on to our general consent items, and the two items for consideration are approval of our minutes from the last regular board meeting of May 8th. And then we have one personnel item, and that is a support staff hire. Superintendent Ness?
Yes, Patricia Vektor. This is by far the fewest HR moves we've made in a long, long time, so hopefully those are settling down, so I would recommend that hire.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion on the general consent items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that is approved, and we'll jump into new business where the first item where we're looking for a motion is fiscal year 2017 consortium membership agreement with Lakes Country Service Cooperative for the early childhood family education program. So is there a motion to approve the membership agreement?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any questions on that? Do you see the information related to that in the packet?
So just so you know, we, our early childhood programming is, goes through, our staff is hired through the service, but by Paris, for example, are hired by our district, so we have a blended program there. That's why Lakes Country is, you know, they do all the hiring, set the hours and all of that, with, based on what we need.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that's approved. Is there a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between Minnesota State Community and Technical College and our school, the secondary school, for the 2017-18 concurrent enrollment program? This is what, this is the annual agreement that provides college in the classroom. Is there a motion for approval?
Some moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that's approved. Is there a motion to approve the extended school year services and summer school for special education students? This requires a bit of extra personnel and expenditure, and so it is an annual item that we have before us. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move we approve that.
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. That's approved. Our principal spoke earlier about the Right Start summer programs for kindergarten in grades five and six. Is there a motion to approve the funding and provision of those programs?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving Right Start summer programs for kindergarten in grades five and six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that is approved, and now we have a resolution before us, and this is the final piece of our unrequested leave process with the teaching staff. And so whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 adopted a resolution proposing two teachers, names I'll later read, on unrequested leave of absence on April 24th, 2017, on the grounds of financial limitations, and whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave was received by those two teachers in person or by certified mail on or about April 25th, 2017, and whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave contained a statement setting forth the reasons for the proposed placement, as well as a statement that he or she was entitled to a hearing before the school board provided he or she make a request in writing within 14 days of the receipt of the said notice, and that if no hearing was requested within 14-day, the 14-day period, it constituted acquiescence by the teachers to the board's proposed action. And whereas no written request of any kind was received by the school board or superintendent of the schools from either of the teachers for a hearing as of May 18th, 2017, and whereas said failure to make a written request for a hearing within 14 days after receipt of notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave constitutes acquiescence by the teachers to her, to their placement on unrequested leave, be it therefore, or hereby resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 544 that Sally Despard, reduction of 1.1167 full-time equivalent, and Isabel Navatiril, 0.6667 full-time equivalent, be here, be and hereby are placed on unrequested leave of absence as teachers of Independent School District Number 544 on the grounds of financial conditions effective at the end of the 2016-2017 school year on June 30th, 2017 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A. 40 subdivision 10, Article 15, Section 2 of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative without pay or fringe benefits. Be it further resolved that a notice of placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teacher by certified mail or handed to him or her in person, and that an affidavit of the same be placed in their file, together with a copy of the notice and the resolution. Again, noting the teachers, number one, Sally Despard, number two, Isabel Navatiril. Neither a full-time position. And so is there someone who will offer this resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
All right. And as noted, it's a lot of legalese required by And as noted, it's a lot of legalese required by statute in order to ensure that we are appropriately, actively, are accurately advising the teachers of their discontinued positions.
Just a point, when it says financial conditions, basically the student population isn't there, so the revenue isn't there, therefore to pay the expense, so that's, it's based on student need.
And both of these were IQ Academy teachers.
Correct.
All right. Any discussion or anything further before we take rule?
Ms. Keith, yes. Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steve Vigasson?
Yes.
Natalie Cole?
Yes.
Blaine Daniels, yes. Natalie Kinnick?
Yes.
The resolution passes.
Very good. Thank you. We have a proposal before us to raise the meal prices for the 2017-2018 school year. An elementary lunch would potentially be raised to $2.35 and secondary lunch to $2.50 if someone makes that motion and we move forward. Is there someone who will make the motion?
I'll move.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, I kind of set that up bad because we're required to do it by federal law, so it's not like it's big F.
Just to note, this fifth grade, even though fifth grade is coming to this building, they are still heavy to the elementary lunch price.
Okay. What other questions? So 10 cent increase to meet the federal requirements and...
And just to let you know, the penalty for not doing it is you can lose your federal funding or be required to go to $2.87 per meal.
Well, we'll line right up then. All righty. Okay, all in favor of the proposed 10 cent increase to the meal prices for the next school year, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And anybody who wants to vote that it seems kind of crazy, that's not a vote for me, so... Okay. We have, our next new business item is addition of a part-time early childhood family education secretary receptionist position beginning with the next school year, 2017-18 school year. Is there a motion to add a part-time secretary for that, for that program, for the childhood program? So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. And Jerry, you want to speak to that?
I certainly can. Yes, there used to be a secretary in that position, but we moved the early childhood programming to the Kennedy Building and so then the secretary in that building took it over. Well, they've been suffering, I will say, out at the Heritage Building without a secretarial staff member there, so. And this position will take back, they'll do the census work, the preschool screening work, you know, monitoring the comings and goings of parents is a number of, again, a security item where they will check to see who's coming and going in the door. And there's a number of items. There is parent aware, so the scholarship programs that you have to apply with the state, there's different things that you have to do. So there's lots of work for this person to do and I highly recommend these position.
And the job description is in your packet if you want to read that.
All right. Any discussion on this motion before us?
Yes, I had questions about two of the qualifications. Qualification number four said that the secretary needed to have experience with high school students.
Well, that's a typo.
Okay.
Yes. We need to make that correction because it was a draft, so.
Okay.
Yes, that's a typo. That should not be that.
And then the other one was qualification number five. And it said that the person just had to have basic first aid, a little bit of first aid. It didn't mention CER. And it said that they might be giving insulin shots. Boy, that just seemed to me like more than you're just putting, you know, on a Band-Aid basic first aid.
So what happens is our nurses will train all of our secretaries. So it's nice to have some, you know, knowledge right away, but it's not required, so it's a very minimal requirement. We always train our secretarial staff for whatever they'll need to do. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we've got approval there. And the final new business item is a request from Michelle, for Michelle Kangas to have a five, or, I'll start over. Request from Michelle Kangas for a half-time, full-time equivalent, five-year leave of absence. So it's a teacher mobility leave and that would begin with the 2017-2018 school year. So the motion is she wants to go from full-time to now to half and then she'll be IQ rather than classroom here. So is there someone that will offer that motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Very good. That concludes the new business. We would note, our next regular board meeting will flip over to the early morning hours in honor of those very few months of good weather that we have. So we're gonna be at 7:15 Monday, June 12th, here in the Otter Community Room, noting the graduation ceremonies Thursday night at the ALC at 7:00 p.m. IQ Academy reception Friday at 4:00 and then the Kennedy Secondary School graduation, 7:00 p.m. Friday in the Gold Gym. We will stick around tonight for a discussion. Several items, including an envoy presentation from two of our fourth grade teachers and kindergarten request from Mr. Kolbeck and then update from the superintendent. Anything, anything further? A motion to adjourn then, please?
Some moved.
And the second?
The second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.